We start with the invocation and the pledge. John, would you do the invitation, please?
Father God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessings we have to be able to come together and serve the community, serve the citizens of Midland County. We just ask that you be with the court as they make the decisions that affect all those. Be with our first responders and military as they're on the front lines granting us the freedoms that we exercise today, both overseas and domestically. We are so blessed by our community and want to be appreciative and grateful for that. Father, we just ask all these things in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
I believe this is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Ladies, would you all speak into that mic? Let's see if we get any feedback or if it's all up here.
No.
Same with you.
Could it be that that mic is down? That mic is...
And somebody lift the mic up at the podium, please. Well, the mics don't work no court today. Okay, we'll try this. And Bailey, depending on the feedback we get on the system, we may come off and just talk loud for a while. Okay? With that, number three, discuss take action on court minutes from February 13, 2017.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Here we have a motion and a second. All in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. The next item, discuss take action on grant for Veterans Treatment Court Judge Dar. And this is not Judge Dar.
Not today.
As you may recall, we have a grant writer for the county and he's standing before you. Edward, can you tell us about it?
Yes, so Judge Dar approached me about helping out with the federal BJA grant. This is a three-year, $400,000 request. There's funding for about 40 to be granted. Last year, there were six in this category that support veterans courts particularly. So this would be an enhancement grant that's going to support the court with a few extra staff positions. All of the positions are temporary, so they would not extend beyond the three-year spectrum of the grant.
Okay. And the match for the county?
Right. There is a 25% county match that's required. Current funding is about $125,000 a year with the county. So this $125,000 request federally is, you know, there's a 50/50 there at current funding levels.
So you're telling us we don't need to come up with any more match?
Correct, yes. There would be a roughly $50,000 commitment from the county each year if this grant was funded, which is currently half of what the current support is.
Judge Dar visited with me about it, and it's one of the few grants where really not much money gets a lot of money. And there's no back end, as he said. So she's simply going to apply for it. It would affect our upcoming budget for that court should she be successful.
Correct, yeah. The funding would start October 1st, 2017.
And the auditor's office would be the fiscal agent representing the county.
Correct.
Okay? Discussion? Questions?
I'd make the motion that we apply for the grant for Veterans Treatment Court.
Okay. Second. Okay, we have multiple seconds. Let me ask the first and the second. You are saying apply in the amount that Edward has described to us.
Yes.
There's grants that are much more than that, but what he talked about was what we agreed to.
Yeah, $125,000.
Yes, it's a $400,000 over three years. Comes out to roughly $125,000 a year. The grant is capped at 400, so we're working to get right up at that ceiling. It's, right now, the grant is written for $398,000, a little bit of change.
Okay, so would the motion and the seconds agree to that?
Yes.
All right.
Judge, I do have one piece of discussion about that. So let's say, are there any parameters that we're looking for in terms of success that if and when this grant totally ends, that we're having, we have a very large program that we had to all of a sudden come up with?
Well, when the program, the grant ends, this program ends, the additional support, the court itself doesn't. But to be more direct, Randy, here's Tony Fabbala, Fabella, who does all the state criminal evaluations. I was with him last week in Austin, and the director of the granting agency. And they both said, "We're looking for improvement on what we're seeing now." So our answer is, "We'll help you measure this." And then it will be a discretionary call on each entity whether it was successful.
Okay. Thank you.
I've got one more question. I'm looking over the last part of the estimated funding, Part 18. It talks about federal and then applicant. Is applicant, that's the amount that we are, and that's over four years, right?
That's over three years.
Oh, that's over three years?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it's $50,000 additional.
Okay, I see. I see now.
But we budgeted $100,000 for this court.
A little over $100,000.
So we're going to need the other 43 for the matching?
We're going to need another 50, 43 to 50.
43,000?
If I may interject.
Yes.
No additional funds. The current 100, that, we'll say the first 50 will be the match. So there's no additional required. You can use the existing funding as the match.
Yeah. Oh, okay. I see.
But the last year of the grant, it is a possibility that we will have to come up with 40,000 or 43, which is predicated on what our funding levels are in that last year.
Correct.
Okay?
Okay.
So we don't want to mislead you. There could be a possibility of additional funding, but the way it's designed right now, there isn't.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We had discussion?
No, I think we got it.
I said we had discussion, and now we're back to the motions. And...
We already have two motions.
Two motions are on.
We still have to go...
Yeah, but I'm trying to remember who made the motion.
I made the motion.
Okay, and you?
Ramsey, second.
All right. All in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thanks.
Number five, and you will tell Judge Dar, right Edward?
Yep.
Thank you. Number five, discuss take action on final plat, replat of Lot 84 Vista Del Sol Plat Cabinet J, Page 2, 4.580 acres of land out of Section 48, Block 38, T1, South Midland County, Texas. Is this really the last one? We're going to look at this?
As far as I can tell, they should be, they should be building on it shortly.
Okay.
Robin, I don't, there's no problem with this one, but anticipating, Russell, what you're talking about doing with either zoning or plating, will that affect things like this in the future? Or if so, how will it affect it?
Well, it could affect, I mean, the, just the things that have to be done before it can get approved. But it, but it won't affect any that have already been approved.
In other, in other words, it's, I mean, I didn't know that plating would be affected, but zoning only, but is, so it's going to possibly affect both areas? Plating and zoning?
Well, the primarily, the primarily redoing the plating regulations as well.
Okay.
I'll look and see if we can, we don't, right now, we don't have any zoning regulations.
Okay, so we're not anticipating that with the work that you're doing?
I have, I've not started looking that. I'll look and see if there are any changes that would allow us to do it. But previously, we haven't been able to do zoning.
Thank you.
And further clarification, the court may recall, we've had this come through a couple of times on survey questions as to acreage, and there's a little change here and a little change there. It is the only one I'm aware of that's in the system since we announced Russell's going to redo the plating. Everybody else, we have been telling, Randy, just hold off. We're going to see 60 days what the documents look like. We'll give them to you, and then everybody's on the same page.
Thank you. Did you make a motion, Robin?
I'd make the motion to accept the plat.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item six and seven are together, so let's talk about number one, receive update on the Extension Service, and that's Jeff, and then discuss and take action on use of Horseshoe for the AgriLife Program Kids, Cows, and More on March 28 to 29, 2017. Good morning!
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
How are you?
We're good. How are you guys doing?
Hi.
Good. Good. We just wanted to give you guys an update for the programs.
Can you introduce yourselves for the record?
My name is Candace Carter. I'm the Family and Consumer Science Agent with AgriLife Extension Service.
Thank you.
Yes, we just wanted to give you guys an update of the programs that we completed last year and the programs that we'll be doing this year. For myself, I completed the Diabetes Education Program throughout the county. It was a three-pronged program where we addressed diabetes amongst African-Americans, Hispanics, as well as Caucasians. We had a great turnout for that program. We had about, close to 150 people. And it's a program that will continue this year as well because diabetes is very prevalent in Midland County as well as Hector County, so we'll continue to address those needs. The next program that I did in the county was geared towards kids. Rebecca and I, Rebecca, who's our Better Living for Texans Assistant, we went to four schools, Lamar Elementary, Bonham Elementary, Greathouse, and Bowie. Thank you. And we did our program. It's called Walk and Talk. Walk and Talk, it's an eight-week program where we got the kids to, you know, get outside and walk during, you know, good weather that we have here. And it's geared towards getting them to incorporate more physical activity, as well as eating properly. And the numbers from those schools, we saw about 3,000 kids. And the kids had a blast, you know, they learned about fruits, they learned about vegetables, portion sizes, drinking more water, you know, getting rid of empty calories, you know, geared towards healthy snacking and things like that. So those are the things that we addressed in that program. Another program that we completed was a multi-county program with myself as well as the Family and Consumer Science Agent in Monahans, and that's West Texas Conference on Aging. And that conference is geared towards the aging population, everything related to Medicare fraud, abuse. Those are some of the topics that we addressed, and we're going to be having that conference again in two weeks here in Midland. What else? And we also had the Childcare Conference. I came early in the year and I spoke to you guys about that for special needs, and that's another program that we're looking into again. But it's probably going to be a multi-county program where it's myself, the agents from Hector County, Stanton, and Monahans to see if we can get larger numbers for those programs. So I think that's about it for me.
Candace, on the program for the elementary schools?
Yes.
Is that rotated year by year to the different, so that everyone eventually gets to be part of that, or how's that work?
Actually, we call the schools and they say yes or no. So this year again, it's not going to be the same schools. We're not sure as yet who's going to jump on board, but we're hoping that eventually we can get to all of the schools. Because the kids do have a great time, yeah.
Is there any way to expand that program where every kid? Do you only do a certain grade or the whole school?
Pretty much, it's, the younger kids are a part of it too, but we focus more on like third grade and up. Because like the kindergarten kids, like when they're in the gym, it's just, to them, it's just free play. There's no, you know, get them, getting them to walk or to go outside, or, you know, it's just free play for them, so.
Well, I'm just wondering, this, I mean, I think the thing, the program is a really good idea, just like the one we fixed to talk about kids, cows, and more. And I'm wondering if there's any way for every kid in Midland to get a chance to get exposed to that before they age out? In other words...
I mean, that would be a great idea. That's, that's what we're gearing towards, but sometimes we call the schools and, you know, they have a totally different schedule, so we have to do the programs based on the schedule. Or sometimes it's just that they're not interested in that particular program.
Right. Right. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys, and thank you for always supporting us.
Rebecca, you want to say anything?
Yes.
Or make a face, or anything you want to?
Her race is up, so. Good morning!
Good morning!
Okay, so my program's from the state. I'm supposed to do a fresh start to a healthier you, and then the other one is Walk and Talk, like we did at the schools. But my audience is more of the lower-income adults, so I've been gearing more towards like apartment complexes and senior centers and the foster grandparents and senior companions, like those kind of people. So last year, I had 236 graduates from my programs, and those are the only two programs that I can do, so I'm not very flexible like Candace is. But so far this year, I've gone to multiple places and I have more programs set up for the rest of this year. So that's really all the updates I have.
Where are the locations that you put on these programs specifically?
Specifically, like Cimarron Place is a really good one, the Senior Centers on Illinois and the Southeast Senior Center, and Westridge Apartments, San Arida Apartments, different, just different ones.
Cool. Thanks.
Yeah, no problem. Thanks for having me.
And y'all's other member of your team? Jeff?
If I could have just a minute. My name is Jeff Floyd. I'm the Horticulture Agent, and I oversee the Master Gardener Program and all of the horticulture programs in both Hector and Midland Counties. Every year, the Master Gardeners do about 8,000 hours, anywhere between 8,000 and 10,000 hours of volunteer time back in the community, so, and you can put a monetary value on that. So it's fairly significant return that they give to the community. They're trained volunteers. That's what we do for y'all. All the agents here work with volunteers and community citizens. I'm always surprised when, you know, the number of residents that don't know the services that are available to them, and yet we're all, really, all very busy, as well as the Master Gardener volunteers. Couple of things that I've got going on through the Horticulture Program that I think would be of interest to you. We have what's called an EarthKind trial going on in Gardendale. All, both counties are involved in this. These EarthKind, the EarthKind Horticulture is really the backbone for horticulture with Texas A&amp;M. The creator of that program, Dr. Steve George, comes down here a couple of times every year and does an EarthKind Home Landscape School class. And I would, when that happens, I would be, I would be very happy if we could get maybe some exposure through the county website or something on that in the future. A lot of folks love that. It is, it's sitting in the classroom for about four days. They will learn all about home, about landscape design, the plants that do well out here, how to use water out here, how to use it effectively and efficiently, and even low-quality water. This is what these EarthKind Home Landscape, or the EarthKind Research addresses. We're growing right now grapes. I've got 40 varieties of grapes. They're growing on their own root stock. I don't know if you know, but most grapes grow are on grafted roots that do well, that confer some advantages to them in particular soils or conditions. These 40, this, the four varieties, 40, 40 plants, four varieties, I should have said. If anything happens to these, if they're frozen back, if they're killed back to the ground, they'll come right back from the roots, from their root stock, so they don't have to be regrafted. So the goal of this is, the EarthKind trial altogether is to find turf grass that will grow well for folks out here, grapes that will grow well for negligent gardeners such as myself, and even perennials that will grow well. We know, we have a good handle on the perennials, but we're trying a new grass called Seashore Paspalum, which doesn't only tolerate salt, it actually has a salt requirement, and we know that we have salty water coming from our wells. It's a coastal variety. It's used at Moody Gardens quite a bit, their golf course out there. We're trialing these plants out here so that hopefully in the future, we can find out, we can discover plants that do well for citizens. The next time we run into a drought and we're drought, we're irrigating with salty well water, I think that we won't lose quite as many plants or lawns if we're utilizing some of these trialed varieties. Another one, we've never been able to grow citrus out here. We're trialing that. I've got a grafted Mandarin orange that will tolerate temperatures down to 19 degrees, and it's on its own root too. So if it, if it is frozen back to the ground and it comes back from the root, it'll still be the same plant. Pretty rare for us to have citrus in a landscape in West Texas. I was so impressed with what the Master Gardeners have done with their volunteer time that I challenged a county to the, to see how many hours they could get compared to how many we can get. I have a secret that they don't know, though, and that is that I don't think the Master Gardeners record all of the hours they do, and I think that if they will just record more efficiently, they don't have to do a second more work to beat this county that I've challenged. But I know they're going to do well because I told them that if they don't, I'm going to sing for them as a punishment at their Christmas event, so.
We'll donate some hours.
So.
Would you, would you introduce Tricia for us?
Absolutely, yes, please. Tricia Boyd. Tricia Boyd is one of our Master Gardeners, and she's going to be helping us with number seven on our list. Come on up, Tricia.
Come on up.
Come on up.
Okay.
This is Tricia Boyd. So number seven on your, number seven on your agenda is the Kids, Cows, and More Program. Do you want to say a little bit about it, or you?
You go ahead.
Oh.
You told me I didn't have to speak.
I'm sorry, and I didn't make you do that. You'll have to talk to Commissioner Donnelly about that. So Tricia's going to be spearheading the Master Gardener Volunteers for the Kids, Cows, and More Program, and we wanted to ask for permission to get the Horseshoe Arena, Barn D, I believe it is, that we're using, the livestock barn, to do that. It's an ag literacy program. It's always surprising the number of kids that think that milk comes from Walmart, and they actually see a cow milked as part of this program, and they go through several other stations. Tricia is, is, that's a tough job because she's got a whole bunch of Master Gardeners that she's got to kind of line up and schedule for certain parts of this rotation for two solid days. But she's also going to be helped by some other folks. Courtney, before she left and she set this up, Courtney was our 4-H agent before, before she moved out of the county. Before she left, she set up a Midland County Leadership Advisory Board, so that's a, that consists of a whole bunch of county stakeholders, and they're critical too, and they really are the ones that plan this program. There are three stations. We're going to have a water station, a 4-H station, we'll be utilizing 4-Hers also, so we want to get those guys into the program. So the 4-H kids will be showing some of the programs that they do, archery, shooting sports, things like that. And we will have a livestock station where we'll have a cow, no, I take that back, a horse, and we, we might have a beef there. I think we're supposed to have beef and horse at that station. Anyway, we're going to have a couple more meetings, and we're trying to round up some of this stuff. And then we're going to have, like I said, the water station, we're going to have a cotton gin. 40 minutes will be spent, 40 minutes of that, the most significant portion of that's going to be set, sitting at a, watching a dairy cow milked and learning about how cheese is made and how milk is made and how it's taken to the market, et cetera. So kids are really impressed by this after they watch a cow actually milked, a dairy cow actually milked in the program.
Jeff, you're asking for Building B.
Building B, thank you.
Which is the large indoor dirt in the back part, right?
Right, yes. I think I said D.
Without the stands?
Correct, right.
Okay. And you're asking under the provision that it's a county function, and we would pay Mr. Dooley's management fee and donate the building to you. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Jeff, before you go, would you, do you remember the names of your leadership council?
Of the, of the leaders of which now?
The leadership council that was put together.
I don't have all of them. I do know that Commissioner Donnelly, you're on it. We've got, we've got Matt from Fiddlesticks Farms on it. I'm sorry, I'll submit that to the court. I'll email it to the quarter. I did not commit all of those names to memory. I had just had two meetings with that group, and I do have sign-in sheets, but I did not know most of them before.
Sorry about that. Jake McCullough and the lady, Jake McCullough's on there, and I can't remember the lady that came in. Do you remember her name?
From El Paso?
No, not Sandra.
For locally.
The local.
No, sir, I don't. I did not.
I didn't bring my notes either.
Okay.
Are you going to milk the cow?
No. No, I'm, I thought we'd get Jeff to, get you to play the water game, though. There is a water, a water piece of this, and it's got a big barrel with a platform that sits on top of it. We thought you'd be perfect.
The budget vehicle.
Thanks very much, Jeff. Thanks, Tricia.
Jeff, if you, before you leave, would you take just a moment, tell the court, you and I had a discussion about beautifying out around the Extension Service and that. Would you share that with the court?
Sure will, yeah. Thanks for reminding me about that. So, you know, when you go out to the Extension Building, it's kind of hard to find. We have a lot of programs out there, and one of the most common problems that we have are folks that say, "Well, you know, we passed it, we put it in the GPS, we went a mile and a half too far." So we need to put some landmarks out there. So I've asked the Master Gardeners again to step up and volunteer. So I've got a trainee class of 14 Master Gardeners this year. They've already begun. When you ask a Master Gardener to do something, you really need to step out of the way because they're, they're just going to run you down to get it done. They're excellent volunteers. The Extension Office, to me, has always looked like it's having a fire sale or we're going out of business. And so I just, you know, finally, I said, "I'm going to buckle down and just do what it takes to kind of clean up and make it look more attractive out there." So what we're going to do is we're going to have some planters out front and a little bit of signage with the help of the county road and bridge crew. They're going to help us with some signage out there, make it a little bit more identifiable, and some plantings and things like that. And then along the front, in the parking lot, we've got plans for some, some very attractive raised beds, again, with plants that do well in West Texas. So I think we're going to make it look like we're back in business.
Good.
Well, thank you very much for doing all this. I know you all are shorthanded, but soon as the state gets rid of their hiring freeze, then we can get active in trying to get you some companions.
Good. We need it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay. Excuse me. Number eight, acknowledge donation from Vicki and Javid Anwar to the Midland County Public Libraries. And John, its agenda's, agenda is that way, but you need to give a little more...
Yes, sir. So the Midland County Public Libraries have partnered with the Bynum School to bring Mrs. Bush out for a day of events, which is actually this Thursday. She's going to be the keynote speaker at the Bynum School Luncheon, which they have every year, and then she will do a book signing at the Centennial Library immediately following. They, the Bynum School, they're doing their fundraiser portion. We didn't want to step on their toes, but we were responsible for half of the fee and expenses to incur with her. That was not something I had budgeted, and so Mr. Anwar, again, has been very gracious and supportive of the library, and he is our underwriting sponsor for our half of Mrs. Bush's event.
And it's a pass-through?
Yes, sir. I've already spoken with the auditor. We're gonna pass through my just general donation, and we are actually going to reimburse Bynum. The contract for Mrs. Bush is actually through Bynum, and so they will pay the entirety of the fee and we will reimburse them our portion.
And she will sign books when?
She is signing books from 1:30 to 3:00 this Thursday at Centennial.
Only?
Only our great big backyard, one per individual and a limit of 500, so basically the first 500 people in line. No personalization, just signature. Barnes &amp; Noble will be on-site. We've partnered with them many times in the past, they'll be on-site selling for us, and then the library will get a portion of those proceeds.
Where's this fundraiser gonna take place?
The Bynum School luncheon is having at Midland Country Club, and she is the keynote there. That's not actually our event.
That's a buy a ticket?
Yes, sir, it's a, they've been sold out for some time, but it's a luncheon at Midland Country Club, to answer your question, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Okay, so there is the request to acknowledge it, even though it's a pass-through. We're grateful for the Anwar's support, they've been pretty, pretty.
Yes, sir, they've been very supportive of the library.
Supporting the library.
I'd make the motion to acknowledge donation from Vicki and Javid Anwar to the Midland County Public Libraries.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes. Number nine, acknowledge statistics for Law Library for 2016.
We've done several of these, locally this is it for us. We're working on our annual report for the state, and so as we compile these, we are getting those together, and so I will no longer bore you with data and meetings moving forward. But as you know, the Law Library falls under my umbrella and is used heavily and continues to have increased usage, particularly the notary service for the clerks is very popular. They do have some public computing in there as well for attorneys, attorneys meet with clients in there, so it is a well-used facility, so. Obviously, they have the same hours as the courthouse does, she's limited, but we are required to have a paralegal in there, which Elizabeth Lopez is, so we're grateful for that, but be glad, that's that data, be glad to answer any questions you may have.
We do not give out advice, we just direct people to.
Correct, sir, and then access to the library in there, plenty of materials in there, but more and more, she's doing notary service for the clerks' offices.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to acknowledge the statistics.
Okay. Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes. Ten, discuss, take action on library donations.
That can be held, Judge, I apologize, there was some confusion. We wanted to highlight Mr. and Mrs. Anwar's donation. I don't have any traditional material or monetary donations.
Okay, we'll hold it by agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Eleven and twelve are a little ahead of schedule, so we're gonna hold both those. What that involves, you know, we're currently going through a reclassification, or not, in some cases reclassifying and others just confirming that we meet the federal labor guidelines for job descriptions, pay, and all the other items. And Witt Smith has almost finished their work, but they've sent us two or three departments that needed upgrade, I know Bailey's made some adjustments, that's what this is, the library's made some adjustments, the auditor had one, and there's a couple more coming. So when it all comes in, in a report, it would be at that time that the court would start down acknowledging each one and recognize, Court, that in some cases, there may be adjustments in the pay schedule to meet those standards, but it's still the court's option under the current rules, we can go down, but that means if you've got three over here doing something at this rate, and you got one doing the same thing, not at that rate, then you gotta take them all down, or you take them all up. But we'll see that in the forthcoming weeks. The good news is the federal court has a hold on the onerous details to get involved in those descriptions. It's expected to come out sometime this summer, but we need to be ready ahead of time, so that's what's behind it. Thirteen, discuss, take action on out-of-state travel for Priscilla Bonilla Herman Casas to attend Veterans Conference in Washington, DC. Now.
Good morning.
Good morning, are you a veteran?
No, sir.
Okay.
This is for the requested Judge Starr, says pre-trial's involved in the Veterans Court, she'd asked us to attend. It's not a budgeted, and.
No, she talked to me about it.
Okay.
Yeah, she's asking because they do have the responsibility of keeping up with these folks, which is more than a task sometimes.
Yes, sir.
So she is asking that Priscilla and one other employee be familiar with how they're running.
Yes, sir.
So this being a non-budgeted item would be out of contingency as a suggestion.
Priscilla, do you know what the amount is that you're requesting?
Roughly, I kinda roughly estimated between me and JP, we're looking at about $4,500 per person, and.
That includes hotel, travel, and?
Yes, sir. So I do have a little bit of money that I can transfer from our monitor.
The court may differ. I would not want you to transfer monitor money.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we transfer, I guess we'll need $9,000 for travel into the, to our account from contingencies, and I don't know, does it have to be split up or will it just be under travel?
It'll be under education and training, it's a conference, correct, under education and training, $9,000.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes. Priscilla, if you could, ahead of time, you certainly can afterwards, but if you give the auditor a little outline of how that $4,500 is gonna be spent, as we understand.
Yes, we'll do.
Okay?
Okay, thank you, sir.
Good, have a good.
Thank you.
Fourteen, discuss, take action on out-of-state travel for Bailey Lively and Jenny Hilton to attend the SHRM Conference in New Orleans, Louisiana on June 16th through 21st, 2017, and this, Bailey?
This is the annual SHRM Conference that has everyone from all over the place, other countries, United States, and we can get, I can get most of my continuing education hours required at this one training to keep my certifications, so, and then there's beginner classes to help Jenny as she's learning.
She starts, so we appreciate Bailey doing this and guiding her through the darkness and environments.
No problem.
And it's all budgeted?
It is in my budget, I believe it is.
Is her, Jenny's not, because the court acted to get her own, it's not having the budget. So hers would have to, I believe there are travel funds in our budget.
Okay.
Under education and training?
We'll need to transfer them in there, but if you'll let us take a look first, I think we can pay them out of our budget. If we can't, we'll visit with the auditor.
Okay. Make the motion for out-of-state travel for Bailey Lively and Jenny Hilton to attend the SHRM Conference in New Orleans.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes. Thank you, Bailey. Acknowledge educational hours for the county clerk.
Allison. Good morning.
Thank you.
I received, you should have it there in front of you, 50 and a half hours.
Motion to acknowledge.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes.
Thank you.
Allison. Number sixteen, discuss, take action on uniforms for the election office.
Morning.
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 I, last year I had budgeted $225 for uniform shirts, jackets for my staff. We did not use any of that. Knowing this year we would have almost a whole new staff, I upped that to $495, and the reason I'm asking for uniform money, I know that's out of the ordinary for most departments, when my ladies have to go out and troubleshoot either the avatronic machines or the laptops during an election, we have voters, we have sometimes candidates or media in the vicinity, and I feel like it would be more beneficial and more comforting to the public if they knew and saw an elections office Midland County logo on a shirt or jacket, that that person was in fact supposed to be handling that equipment and doing a fix or a trade-out than just some person in regular clothes, why are they over there messing with the voting equipment? And I think for the comfort and well-being of the public, that it would be nice if we could continue to get shirts and jackets for that purpose.
Well, you say you're asking for $495, you carried over some from your budget you didn't spend.
Right.
So you're asking the court to come up with the rest?
No, sir, I had budgeted $495 this year in my budget for uniforms.
Excuse me, I misunderstood.
Yes, sir.
And that's not from state monies, these are from county general funds.
Right.
And in your information, it says you've been told you won't, you can't use money for uniforms.
That we may not be, that we may not be able to purchase uniforms, that that historically had been limited to facilities and IT, and law enforcement folks.
Well, that is kinda true. The remainders that I'm aware of, those folks have bought their own, they've used their own money, which we have no say-so about if you're using your own money, but you're saying the public purpose is for the public to acknowledge it's your person working on it. Does your person work on the machine all the time, or is there a third party that?
No, sir, it would be us, it's usually Carolyn and Beth and I that go out and do, you know, a reboot or swapping out of a machine or reseating something that has come loose at a polling location.
What's a uniform?
It would probably be a polo or a button-down shirt of some kind and possibly a jacket. Carolyn, right now, is the only one that has a jacket left. You know, I have two staff members, one's less than a month and one's less than a year, and then Beth and I have been there longer, but we've never purchased anything, so.
Would it possibly be cheaper or simpler to get armbands of some sort, and that way and then you can keep them and when somebody needs to go do something, they can put on a little?
Concern is that when you leave the county, it's county property and you need to have it checked back in.
Yeah, you're gonna create a.
So you, you're.
Problem for yourself, I think.
Because then you don't want, if you're using this for identification purposes, then you don't wanna have.
Right.
So that's what the thought process is.
I like the idea of somebody being able to be identified, but there, I mean, perhaps, like I say, an armband that has some official insignia on it, and then you're in control of them and you check them out and then check them back in and don't have to worry about people coming and going, changing sizes and taking, people taking their stuff home and using it somewhere else.
Okay.
Is that a possibility?
We can check into that, I would have to get those checked in to find out where we would get those made, something like that.
But I see your point, I mean, it would be comforting to the public to know if somebody's official is there.
I've got two questions, and it's for both arguments. One of it is, do y'all not use an ID badge when you go out there?
Well, we have these, but you know, there's people standing in line that are from Chevron, from Oxy, from the hospital, I mean, you know, you, people don't really pay attention as to what it says.
Right, but if anybody was to challenge your question, you, of course, you'd be able to.
Right.
Come out with the badge.
Right.
Then my question, on the other hand, would be, what prevents then, for example, in elections, we mentioned that they can buy their own stuff if they wanted to, if they buy something official that says elections, and then the person leaves, they're still gonna take it home anyway, so what happens then?
Yeah.
So again, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out.
If they use their own money, it belongs to them, I know the auditor's office has done this, Jenny's done this, I believe the clerk's done this, the tax assessor, the library, and some other.
Purchasing?
Oh, yeah, purchasing in the back. They've used their own funds.
Right.
And their uniforms are identifiable and they are continuous in that if somebody's wearing a yellow shirt, they're all wearing yellow shirts, they're not wearing a yellow one and an orange one and a gray one, there's uniformity, but.
The person that you said still has a jacket, how did that person get that?
At some point before I came, when Ruth Sloan was still the EA, they all purchased, they had purchased jackets for.
With their own money?
For every, no, it was my understanding, it was county money, and I know Terry Perry had a couple of polo shirts with her name and the logo on it, but.
I think those were just bought. They weren't.
It wasn't county money?
Oh, okay.
No, I think best we can tell, they were just bought, they didn't come to court for the money.
Oh, okay.
Which sometimes happens in county government.
So I guess I'm asking permission instead of forgiveness.
There you go. So what's the court's pleasure?
Well, now knowing that there's a lot of departments that are purchasing uniforms that is not in the budget, I mean, I'm assuming that these other departments purchased it from their own money, right?
Right.
Not out of the budget?
The ones we identified, well, of course.
The only, currently, I had come to the court at some point in time because every department was asking for uniforms, and so currently, facilities, IT, road and bridge, the court, of course, law enforcement has their own uniforms, but those are the only departments that the court has authorized me to pay, so that's what I had let Deborah know, and so that's why she's here before you.
I think the question is, are we willing to buy uniforms for everybody in the county? Because I know that as soon as we approve it now, I hate to say this, but everybody in the county's gonna come and say, you know what? We need uniforms. I mean, Letty's gonna come and say, hey, I need a uniform for, for county attorney, you know?
Says, I work for Russell Mall. No, she doesn't work for that.
I'm Russell's slave.
Would it be all right to table this for now and let us have a little more discussion on it as far as?
That's mine.
How we can better, better approach this particular situation?
Okay.
If that's all right with you.
And that's fine, you know, I just, since, I mean, we do have the election coming up in May, which is fine, they may not be, wouldn't be ready by then anyway, but, you know, there's been so much in the media about voter fraud and equipment tampering, and not here, of course, but just wanted to do something when we were out there, because we're going to be out there.
Right.
To allay any fears or questions.
One of my concerns is that we don't do well tracking the stuff we buy as far as those personal items like that, and so I'd really like to sit back and talk about it for a while.
Mitzi, is there a policy that states, for example, uniforms, the county will buy uniforms for the following departments, or if not, that's something that I think we need to have, that way we can go back and just say, hey, look, these are the people that are specified?
I believe it is.
Is there? Okay.
I believe it's in there.
Can you, well, whenever we discuss it, I'd like to see if we can pull that policy?
Table it.
And, but yeah, we can table it, I just wanna make sure we've got all the information we need.
Is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
All right, we have a motion to table, we have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so if y'all would continue talking about the subject matter, and particularly with elections, and let's see if we can get some resolution of it, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the two that have their hands in the air, and.
There's three of us that are.
Well, go out and lobby and get anybody else who wants to talk.
I can see lawyers walking down with, you know, like Andy has with a great big crest right there. You have to wear your jacket now.
It's only my support staff, and when we do community outreach, so, we've got legitimate reasons.
We got the picture, everybody's got.
We're supposed to paddle it every day.
Oh, man. Thank you, Elections Office, for bringing this up.
Thank you.
Eighteen, discuss and take action on medical expenses for inmates. All right. Rory, I marked tabling the wrong one, so if you'll do yours real quick, then we'll go back to seventeen for Constable Hall.
I've got three, Judge, you wanna go to seventeen now?
Yeah, if you would, I just marked the wrong line. Let's call seventeen, excuse me, discuss and take action on racial profiling tier two for Constable Precinct Two. You have a report, we have no constable. So, you wanna acknowledge the report, it's in the packet.
Motion to acknowledge.
Okay. We have a motion, is there a second?
Uh, Scott.
All right, motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes. Thank you. Rory? Let's do eighteen, discuss, take action on medical expenses for inmates.
Yes, sir, this was an individual that was wanted in Midland County. He was subsequently arrested in Wiggins, Mississippi.
Perfect.
Yeah, while awaiting extradition, he became ill and was subsequently transported to the hospital there in Wiggins, and he was claiming he was having a heart attack, I guess he thought he could get out of jail by claiming he had a heart attack, which later just turned out to be anxiety, but he did get a bill of $7,186.64.
How much?
Is this pretty standard?
We've had to do that in the past, yes, sir. In the state of Texas, with the code of current procedure, the inmate usually pays for that, but since this was Mississippi, we're not sure if they do that.
I say we put on a $100 a month payment plan, or offer 10% on the dollar.
And that's our recommendation, if we could go ahead and take this out of contingency to clear us with Mississippi, have Russell draft a letter to the inmate declaring that he is, he's the one responsible for, to pay us back, pay the county back.
When did this happen, Rory?
When did this happen, Rory?
Feb... January 24th.
Okay, so it's very...
Was when he was arrested.
So it's just recent?
Yes, sir.
I would suggest that before, if it's okay with you, Rory, before the court approves paying it, let me look at it. I have a couple of questions, and I'd like to look at a few things first, and then bring it back.
Okay.
Before we actually approve paying it.
Is that okay with you?
Yes, sir. That'll work.
So, based on the county attorney, we're going to hold that item.
Yep.
All right. Nineteen, discuss take action on partial exemption racial profiling report, Tier One, for the sheriff's office.
Yes, sir. I wasn't sure if we needed to agendize this or not, but it is just an exemption stating that we are qualified to submit for racial profiling.
The sheriff did that years ago.
Yes, sir.
But we're happy to do it. You don't have to do it in the future.
Okay, perfect.
So let's do get a vote on our census.
I'd make the motion that we approve or acknowledge and support the racial profile, Tier Two, for... I'm sorry, for the sheriff's office. Tier One.
You have that authority.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second on that?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Now, this is the report. Get over here. Discuss. Twenty, discuss take action on Midland County Sheriff's Office racial profiling report for the year 2016.
Yes, I realize y'all are just now getting a copy of that. There's quite a bit of information to go through, so if you have any immediate questions, you can ask or come back at a later date.
I do have some questions regarding some of the information on here. It is split up by ethnicity. What I would like to know is, it doesn't go into depth, for example, the warnings and citations. There's just numbers there, but it doesn't specify who received... Regarding ethnicity, who received warnings and citations. Same things go with the stops that were made. It doesn't state here, out of those contacts, their ethnicity. The arrest with citation type, same thing. Same thing goes with arrests made with warning and citation. Arrests with warning type, the search conducted, and the search consented, the reasons for the search, the contraband found, and then the type of contraband found. None of this is... It's not... If it's a racial profiling report, I would like to see more information on the ethnicity of all those cases, to see if there's a... I'm just trying to compare what those numbers are regarding the ethnicity, the stops, the citations, the warnings, the searches, all that information. Can that be provided?
The stops, if you're regarding to that, it breaks it down.
Right. I'm sorry. Yeah, the stops is the only one that shows that. What about everything else? Like, again, the arrests made, the warning types, the searches? Yes, sir?
I'm sorry. I'm just saying that this is the same report we've been filing for the last six years or so, and I'm following exactly what the state requires us to do through T-CLO.
Right.
This is what they told us to. If you want me to do a report that breaks it down, that'd be time of consumption, personnel, and everything else to do so, because we have it designed to do exactly what the state states us to submit, and I'd have to figure out some way to do what you're asking, because you're looking at 5,000 tickets, and we're gathering the information that you're providing out of them 5,000 tickets, so we'd have to have some kind of program or something that would design it to do what you're asking.
So let me ask you this. Regarding the way that you get stops by ethnicity, I mean, does that take a long time to get that? Because all you would really do would be, you get the stops by ethnicity, and then from there, see what the stops were in regards to, again, if it was a search. I don't see how that would take more time if it's... if the information's already there. Do you see what I'm saying? You already have the numbers, so out of those numbers, what goes where?
It is there on the citation. I agree with you 100%. But the program that we use is not. It's not designed that way. And so we'd have to have something designed that way, or some software purchased that would break it down.
Can you look into that for me?
Yes, sir.
And let me know what we could do regarding that. I'd like to get more detail on this, and I understand this is the same way we've been doing it for the last six years, but there's been more questions that have come up, and I want to make sure that I can answer these questions to the people that are asking me, which is, you know, my constituents are the ones who are asking these questions. So I want to make sure, instead of saying, there were 135 searches conducted, okay, well, what was the ethnicity of that? Why can't answer that? Because I have no idea what it is, so...
Yes, sir. Even the report we're submitting right now, today's date is actually about 50% more than what's required.
Sure.
I actually add stuff into it for that, but I'd like to, if... Maybe in the next year, to do it. I don't know if we can do it this year or not, but I'd have to write a program, or get somebody to help me write a program to do that.
So there's no programs already out there that can do this?
No, sir. No, sir. We're using the Spillman demographic, and that's the only questions it's asking. It doesn't break it down like that.
I think most of the software we've seen are designed to the state standards.
Yes, sir.
And they vary by state, but there is questions, a good one, and there may be one that's a separate program, but of the major jails starting programs, I'm not familiar with one.
Yes, sir. It's this one, we design anything or ask them for it. We're following the state guidelines, is what we're doing.
Out of the 49... 49, 49 stops that were made, the information that you're providing us is only on those 49, 49 stops?
Yes, sir.
So the contraband and all that stuff is an integral part of the 5,000 tickets that we're giving?
Yes, sir. It's the investigation from that stop, that contact.
So the only one... The only missing thing are the warnings, right?
No, it's the warnings, our citations. It's broke down for both. That's both 49, 49 is the number, both for all of our warnings and citations put together.
Okay. I think that's what he's asking. So the stops by ethnicity is the 49, 49 that you're actually reporting on. So the stops and warnings are all part of this 49, 49?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner, the... I think what the... That this is, the stops by ethnicity, is the 49, 49.
Right.
It has all of them. So if you look back, they're just showing breakouts of specific areas of those 5,000 tickets. I don't think it's anything different as far as the ethnicity. There's no difference in that ethnicity.
Yeah, I understand, but then on the ethnicity, you don't know which ones were yes and which ones were no. That's what I'm trying to figure out. For example, on search conducted, you've got 49, 49?
Yeah.
But it doesn't tell you how many of the people that were searched were of Latino origin, were of black origin, were Asian, or were Caucasian.
Well, they only did... You're asking for the 135 out of that 49, 49.
Correct, correct. Rory...
And the kicker is just the information that we've already have in the system, we'd have to go through them 5,000 tickets again to break it down like that for this year, if you wanted it this year. I'd have to go through the 5,000 tickets and redo everything again on it. And that's a quantity of time. I mean, that's a lot of tickets to go through.
Rory, whenever we get a chance, I'd like to meet with you regarding this.
Okay.
So we can talk a little bit more about it, see if we can get more in depth, and see what we can come up with. Because I'd really like to get more detail on it. Again, the questions are going to arise, and I need to make sure I've got answers, and I don't want to be thinking, well, I don't know. So then what's the point of running for election? You know, being a county commissioner, I can even answer the questions for my constituents. Now, I know we've got the information here. We've just got to find out a way to make sure that it's gathered, and that it can be presented in the way that it's being requested, so...
Okay.
I'll get with you on that.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. So for purposes of today's report, do we acknowledge receiving it? Do we approve receiving it?
I think it fits the state, so...
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we... That we acknowledge the Midland County Sheriff's Office racial profiling report for fiscal year 2016.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This would be an appropriate time, I think. To those of you that don't know, sad event for Sheriff Painter and his family. Mrs. Painter, his mother, passed away last week and was buried on Friday, and Commissioner Prude went on behalf of the court. And I'm not aware of any charity or anything. In fact, I haven't been able to catch up with the sheriff, so...
Sheriff's bulletproof vest.
Bulletproof vest, fine.
Okay. Midland County Sheriff's Office, bulletproof vest, fine. So, anyway. All right. Twenty-one, discuss take action on 2017 Operation U, WEX17. That is a Army Special Forces, Special Operations exercise that is done in selected areas, remote areas of the US, and they have been using, the last couple of years, the southeast part of Midland County, along with part of Upton, and two or three other counties. In your backup, it does show you, it's no live fire. This is more strategic in sorting resources and coordination. It's war games, essentially. And they, once again, have asked us to give them permission to do it in South Midland County. The sheriff supports this. I wholeheartedly support it. There is no money to come from Midland County, but under federal rules, they have to have a letter from me and the other judges with their court's support.
Yes, sir. And just for acknowledgement, I did talk to the sheriff. He's reviewed this, and is all for it, so he would appreciate y'all's approval.
It's pretty much the same people doing it again, and the last attachment to the request is the letter I sent last year, and do so again with your approval. They do not allow us to walk in and watch them. This is all done in a very unassuming manner, and that's the way it's supposed to be done.
Judge, I want to... The guy's name is Paul Crownover. I want to... I don't object to this. I want to find out more information about it. Any problems with calling him and getting some more information about what this is all about? I know we've been doing that for two or three years. It's... I find it to be odd, and I want to... I'd like to know more.
Okay. If that's your wish, we'd be happy to do it.
I'm not objecting to that. I'm holding it. I just...
Randy brings up a point. We did have some citizens, year before last, I guess, that came in, and they thought, you know, this was keyed in with the Walmart closing, and they were, you know... You dream it, and that was the subject expressed. That's not the case. It's simply war games. It's two stronger words, so they now call it Army Special Operations Command Exercises, realistic military training.
Judge, so wherever this is happening, somebody can't just, like, accidentally stumble upon...
Oh, you'll see them. It's done all day long and the evening, if... In the document, it tells you. There are hired actors that are role players in this exercise, and you don't know who they are. And should you walk in, it is my understanding, speaking to them, should you walk into it and say, hey, what are you doing? You may be acknowledged, you may not, but it would be hard for you to ascertain who's who, because it's an exercise in putting together local support and local assets that would occur in another country, perhaps. That's about as much as I know about it.
Well, the reason I was asking that question is because it says it will be held at late hours, so I wasn't thinking that they'd be around town doing that. The way I understand this is...
They won't be in Midland proper, that I'm aware of. This is all the terrain... Excuse me. The terrain southeast part of the county is really what they're after. Now, could they come to the city? Yes, they could.
So my question again is, would a citizen, like, accidentally stumble upon this, whatever's going on? And if they don't know any better, I mean, would they know that it's a training exercise?
No. No, because they'd be dressed just like the people in the audience, just like you, except for the military personnel from the tactical side that will be in uniform. That's the way it's been the last couple of years.
So is everything close to where nobody else could accidentally stumble upon this area?
No, and that's the purpose of... Again, I'm expressing what was shared with me a couple of years ago, and then reconfirmed. The purpose of this is, no, it's not a carted-off, rope-lined area. It's just a geographical area on a map to simulate if you were in another country and business was going on as usual. Could you get these things done? The encounter from the military side is only with the paid actors. That's the information. You know any different?
No, sir, I don't. And to answer your question, it's... Last year, to my knowledge, we did not receive any calls through dispatch of citizens coming across these people during their exercises.
If I could use a smaller idea, when Dale and his emergency management team do our exercise tabletop, where we're at the communication center, and selected people in every government, and every supply for an emergency is there, and we get the scenario that they blew up the tank farm, and we're headed that way, and then we hear another call that says, wait a minute, they're now transporting military into the airport, and it causes us to react according to how we're trained. And it's that on a magnified basis by about 10,000.
Yes, sir. That's my understanding. Yes, sir.
So we do it on tabletop. They actually do it in the streets, in the fields, in the woods, in the creeks.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
But Randy, ever request you'd like to know a little more about it before you vote on it?
Yeah. Well, no, no, no. We've been... I trust the sheriff's discretion on this matter, but, you know, they came last couple of years ago and took some really important equipment for our sheriff's deputies. It saves their lives, and I was really upset about that. Not quite as much as Gary was, but I was pretty upset about that, and I want to make sure what the purpose of the training is. It's not... There has been some efforts to nationalize local police forces, and I'm against that 100%. I want independence and autonomy. And anyway, just making sure what's going on, what the purpose of it is, if it's for foreign or domestic. Is it for attacks on American soil? Is it for... You know, I just want to find out what the goal of the training is.
I will do my best to obtain that.
Well, I mean, I'm going to make a phone call to him.
Okay.
So, and you're welcome to, obviously, as well.
All right. I'd make the motion that we authorize the judge to send a letter for the 2017 Operation UX17.
Okay.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Thanks, Rory. Twenty-two, discuss take action on authorizing county judge signed commercial ice machine lease agreement for the cemetery. Ice at the cemetery?
Yes. Ice and RO order. This is a budgeted item. The current ice machine has gone out at the cemetery. They would like to lease an ice machine and an RO unit for a commercial ice machine for a monthly payment of $169.
Okay. What's it used for?
For the cemetery. Whenever they've got to go out and dig the graves and all that stuff, it gets hot.
Okay.
Well, that's a very small part, portion. We have community service workers out there, and we furnish them water to drink when they're doing community service in the summertime, that type of stuff. It's for... Just for ice water. We don't... There's no...
It's for health purposes.
Health purposes, yes.
For overheating.
Yeah.
These are three-year contracts?
Yes.
No, I don't keep anyone on ice.
Who has a question?
This one is for 12 months at a time.
12 months at a time? Yes. I thought we might be keeping some dead bodies on ice or something. That's what I was curious about.
No.
Thank you.
Well, it says here, lease for 36 months. Is there a difference?
Where are you seeing that?
Part two, on page one of two, executive lease. Is that what we're looking at? It says 168.75 a month, plus tax.
Oh, yes. Yeah, it's for 36 months. That's what the lease will be for, but there are... We're only budgeted every year.
Right.
So...
I think it has language that after the first 12 months, we can cancel on 30 days' notice.
I see.
I hope.
Okay.
With that language, I would make the motion that we authorize the county judge to sign the commercial ice machine lease agreement for the cemetery.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Twenty-three, discuss take action on purchase of Florida video content from Centennial Library. This is a budgeted item, but it comes to us now because we have the first bill, and we didn't have the full proposal for the court. Now we do.
Thank you.
Hi, John.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. John and I did get a preview of it last week to make sure it was in line with what we wanted to deliver, and I'd say it's pretty nifty. This is in keeping with our intent to keep the library fresh by changing the, the children's letters frontage out and the video out, and so we're creating a library in these, this will be our third.
Does this equipment have multiple sceneries, as opposed, as opposed to having to change it out every time we change out the scenery?
I don't know.
I don't understand what you're saying.
John, do we...
The content.
Yeah, the content.
This, this is just for content, so as we build the library, we can continue to change the floor protection video like we change the front of the children's letters on a more regular basis.
Yeah, they're not, they're not tied together.
Correct.
So, so is this for hardware or for just content?
This is content, content creation.
I mean, do we have to do this every time we change content? Is my question, it's real expensive.
Yeah, and we don't do it every year. This is, this will be the first time we've done it since we've opened.
But it doesn't, I mean, it seemed like it would have infinite number of, of, you know...
They basically put together a movie, Commissioner, they're putting together the content. I mean, you've been out there, you've seen the pebbles change to water, change to the glacier, and the walrus jumps out and those kinds of things, yeah.
So that's not off the stock thing, they have to hand...
Correct, they're doing original animation.
So we'll be the only library that has this particular...
Proprietary.
Movie, so to speak.
That's, that's exactly right.
Is there not any kind of stock, stuff we can buy that, that has, you know, dozens of different scenarios?
Randy, when we first started this, now, what I'm going to say is it's at least two years old, we looked at that idea, and there is some stock footage, but when we accumulated the seven minutes plus, which is about what that thing runs, it came out to be the same price. So we opted to continue with...
Do something original.
With this animation.
And as the judge said, that, that maybe, I could certainly look at that, Commissioner, and get you a quote.
But we may want to look at it again, but at that time, there was no dollar difference.
Well, I love the, the idea, the concept, I'm still 100% in favor of that, and I think it's very creative, and I was just curious if there was something else out there already, somebody else has already invented the wheel, so to speak.
Yeah, well, I'll certainly look at that for you, Commissioner.
The content that we currently have, this one is seven minutes long, how much is, how long is only we currently...
It's closer to 14, and we spent more because it was a part of the original opening budget. So we did...
How often are we planning to change the content?
As budget allows, Commissioner.
So this one has been, what, two years old?
Two years, three years, yeah.
So what happens to the old content?
Well, we'll have it, so we'll build a library, and we can, you know, change it every quarter or half a year, or however we feel like, much like we do with the children's letters, we've gotten to a point where we're able to change those almost monthly, so every time you walk in, it's, it's fresh and new. Hopefully, over the course of a longer period of time, because it is a larger budget item, we will build a library of video that we can change seasonally or something along those lines.
The seven-minute plus, not up to 14, but seven-minute plus, is the number that we measured people moving through that pathway, they'll move stations, if you will. And since we don't run them, we first opened running them all the same sequence, the same time, and people just stood there.
That's right.
So now, we break it into about two-minute segments, and that causes people to move through the library, and it's proven much more effective. Also, the seven to 10, maybe 12 minutes on the outside has been the economical number.
It gets more expensive, obviously, the more data they have to, but it just plays on a loop.
Yeah, and what we learned by this is two minutes costs the same as seven minutes, and just, I don't understand it.
Yeah, there's a minimum kind of purchase by him.
Same.
Judge, there are a couple things in the terms and conditions I'd like to change, so if you can wait until those changes are made before it gets signed.
Okay. And Robin points out something on this, it says, create a short four-minute, we actually saw it was seven minutes, so the four minutes is wrong.
So we need to correct this to reflect seven, because it says four minutes, seven screens.
You can just mark it out, it's a seven-minute deal when we sat there, and Russell's asked, so if, if you go ahead and approve the first payment, we do need it subject to Russell changing.
Are we going to need $3,200 more, or is that budgeted?
It's all budgeted.
No, sir, I'm not, yeah, we won't exceed the budget.
Okay, all right. I'd make the motion that we purchase the floor video content for Centennial Library, subject to Russell's approval of the content.
Okay.
Second?
A motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Twenty-four, discuss take action on purchase two bird deterrent vapor machines from Bird Buffer.
Bird Buffer. These are budgeted items, and we've budgeted to, to purchase something that's going to distract the birds and move them away. Instead of purchasing spikes, we're going to go purchase two vape, two vapor machines that give off a safe vapor puff that the birds hate. So we have a quote from Bird Buffer for both machines, stands and maintenance kit, at a cost of $20,301.58, and Ector County has used these, they like them.
Dan?
Yeah, you're going to have to explain to me how this works.
So there's some grape seed.
Where do they go?
Oh, you can go ahead.
Where do they go?
The easiest they move, they go away.
No, 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 the, the...
Oh, the birds or the machines?
The puffer.
Are the machines portable?
The machines are portable to a point, yes, we will mount them at the horseshoe at, on the southern edge, so the vapor blows across. Basically, two machines will cover the entire compound and beyond. What we've done now is we spent about $15,000 on bird spikes and put them up, we just moved the birds further up the roof into another part of the horseshoe. Got a price and put in on more spikes, it's another $10,000. This machine, these machines, I was kind of skeptical when I first saw them, but these machines that are in, have been in service for about 10 years, the product they spray, they've been using on vineyards for over 20 years in California, it was, it was invented in California by the vintners to keep the birds off the grapes. And they spray it, and the birds don't even peck the grapes anymore. About 10 years ago, they started making a fog of it, and they've discovered the birds don't even fly over the vineyards. Basically, the way they explained it to me, it's mace for birds. They fly through it, and it makes their sinuses go crazy, and they wobble, and they, and about two times through it, and they avoid the area completely. There's two of them in, in service in Ector County, there's one in a park, and there's no birds there.
Lincoln Park.
Lincoln Park, there's no birds hanging around. The old courthouse that had so much problem with pigeons, they put one up there, I was over there last week and saw four birds. It works.
In Ector County?
They're obviously bear drinkers.
In Ector County. So, we're going to purchase two of them, and they guarantee me that, I was on the phone with them last week, that two will do the entire horseshoe complex.
So what is this stuff that it sprays, is it...
It's a grape extract, it's from the seeds and the skin of the grape, it's one of the chemicals in grape that...
Really?
It's safe and it smells good.
I walked through it at the show.
That's what gives you the headaches.
No, I felt it hit my face, and I smelled this strange smell, and I turned around and looked, and there's this machine, it's about the size of the bottom of this podium, and it was sitting there, and it's putting out this spray. And I thought, what in the world is that? And they had birds over the top of it, and I thought, mm, so I walked over and talked to them, and they said, yeah, what you smelled affect, doesn't affect horses, doesn't affect cows, dogs, birds only.
Stained or anything?
No, that, when it hit me in the face, I could smell it, but it didn't, it wasn't wet, it's a, it's a, it's got a heater in this box, it makes a vapor, and it atomizes it, and it puts it out, it'll cover about 100 feet tall and, and as many acres as the wind will let it.
Well, there, a good West Texas windstorm, or do you have ways of turning it off, does it matter?
It only works, it only works during the daytime, from sunup to sundown when the birds are flying, we turn it off at night.
Again, if you get a good 35 mile an hour gust or what, is that going to affect...
You can mount it on the roof, but we're going to mount it in the parking lot on poles, so the winds carry it across the compound from the south.
How often do you have to buy that fluid?
A gallon lasts about a month.
So how much is a gallon?
Um, well, they didn't break it out individually, it comes with four gallons, which is, which is clo, over three months' worth of supply.
It's something we're going to have to be buying...
Yes, but we can buy that through Granger, they sell it actually at Tractor Supply, Granger, any of the places.
Really? It's that common?
Yes.
Well, the, the...
The mist.
The mist is.
Great mist?
Yeah. A lot of places use it.
Is it really great mist?
Yeah, it's, it's a mist, it's a fog.
My mind is boggled right now. I don't understand how great it is to keep birds away.
So is mine, but I've, if you go online to Bird Buffer and, and look it up, there's lots of testimonies from, from all over the state of Texas, from Cali, I mean, all of the United States where, they put it in.
Property in Death Valley.
So you have to buy a gallon a month, is, is all we're looking at for both machines, or is it a gallon per machine?
It's a gallon per machine.
So two gallons a month?
Yeah.
But we don't know how much the gallon costs?
Well, they didn't break it down individually into what the gallons are.
I just want to announce that Tim is now the leader in the clubhouse for the most unusual request.
I try to keep this active and alive, you know, ice for the cemetery and spray for birds at the horseshoe.
Can you come back with us, come back and tell how much this ga, I just want to know what it's going to be?
$14.
Because it comes out like 500 bucks a month, I mean...
Well, here's our problem.
We're scraping burb.
We're, we're paying people to clean pigeon manure up about three times a week at the horseshoe, so people don't walk through it, you know?
Well, we've got that going on here on the courthouse, too.
Yeah.
Get some grape juice.
So you want four of them?
Oh, hang on, I want to see how it works out there.
You can go to Ector County.
You can go to Ector County and look, and they've got them working right now. They've got two of them.
Can you spray the commissioner's court with some?
Yeah, we did, we haven't found anything for attorneys yet, but I'm sure we got something. Just certain attorneys, you can focus, you can focus it, we're in spray. But, yeah, it's, it's, it's quite a product evidently.
Probably for smashing of the...
They say that once the birds, once the birds fly through it, they just move, they don't roost there anymore, they don't live there, they just go somewhere else. So our pigeons become somebody else's problem.
Have you heard of this thing? This is cool. It is, I mean, I, I don't know how much it is a month.
See, when you send me to these places, I bring back interesting stuff.
The machine is made in one commercial size, is that correct?
There are two different sized machines.
Okay.
And a handheld machine for inside the building, which we're getting one of those included.
Okay.
So you can walk through like B building, if there's birds flying around before an event, and fog the interior and open the doors, the birds will fly out the doors. Yeah, I know, amazing, but true.
So the story you hear is you can't poop in our building?
Well, we, we thought we had a, we thought we had the pigeons under control, and we do in places, but they just keep finding different places to roost, and they keep making messes, right?
Any kind of bird?
Any kind of bird.
White winged dove?
Any kind of bird. They say it doesn't work real well on very small birds, because...
Rackles?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
I got to have some of that.
Commissioner Donley...
So blame it on me.
Yes.
Commissioner Donley asks a question of the moment, based on what the legislature's looking at in bathrooms, will we have to make some accommodations?
We need a ruling from Dan Patrick, if you don't mind, before we do this.
Okay.
We're talking about...
Well, we're not going to spray bath, people unless a bird's in a bathroom.
What you got, Christie?
It depends on the, on the, whether it's, it's a prairie chicken or not, because under the Endangered Species Act, you can't do this to a prairie chicken.
True, but we don't have any prairie chickens out.
Tim?
Yes, I shot them.
Can't just...
With, with water gun, with a pellet water gun, and shoot them away.
Tim, is there a 30-day provision from the manufacturer?
I don't know that there is a 30-day provision, we can lease them, but, you know...
Okay.
We could talk to them about leasing them and, on a trial, if you want.
I thought, I thought Ector County had them on a trial basis.
Yes.
They do.
Ector County does have them on trial basis right now.
How long have they been using them?
About a month and a half, two months.
And they're, they're happy?
Yes, and then the city breaks the park, and the park's clear.
Dale, do you have something you're going to input on this?
He's found a missing...
A powder of prize.
Can we get other flavors besides grape?
No. It doesn't have, it doesn't smell like grape.
The, the manufacturing website has, let's see, has one gallon is 175, but I believe it's a lot cheaper on contract through Granger and through...
Right, we get a big discount from Granger when we buy things.
Good places of that nature.
Okay. You can pay for the machines, they have to be refueled from Granger.
Correct, we can buy the...
About every month?
No, every three, well, a gallon lasts a month.
Yeah, but you can buy a year's supply.
All right.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, it's about 175 a gallon, so we're needing two per month?
That's a retail number.
That's a retail number, it'll be cheaper than that, it'll probably be closer to, with our discount, probably 130, I would think.
But right now, we're spending how much cleaning up bird poop?
It depends on how many people we've got doing it.
I mean, a lot.
Quite a bit, before an event, we have to go around and spray and sweep.
I didn't want, I just want to make sure it wasn't like 600 bucks a gallon or something.
No, no, it's not.
Some of it that I saw said 682, that's what I was asking.
And, and the thing is, once we get the birds to where they're not flying over the area, they say you can scale it down, what it does, it's, it's two minutes off and 30 seconds on, two minutes off and 30 seconds on, two minutes off, and it still lasts a month. They say you can lengthen that to a, to a longer time off.
Right.
And make the gallon last longer, but then you got to watch and make sure the birds don't start flying over the property again.
I'll make that motion, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
All right.
You have a question?
No, well, is there a, a home version of this thing for peacocks?
For peacocks? I'm sure, they make a small one.
Get yourself a super sofa.
A wonderful auditor found a handheld one.
Okay.
All right, cool.
There's a fogger.
Back, back to the question at hand, we have a proposal for two bird buffers.
Two bird buffers.
I'll make that motion that we purchase the two deterrent vapor machines from Bird Buffer.
Okay. Second? Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Tim, you're in the Bird Buffer business.
And ice, thank you.
This needs to be reported on the, on our state magazine, Tim, this is pretty cool.
We're going to recall item 17, it says precinct two, it should have been precinct four. Discuss take action on racial profiling tier two for Constable Precinct Four. It does say two on the printed agenda, on the person speaking, it says Constable Hall. So, you okay with that, Russel?
We're running out of time here, Russell.
What's the deadline?
End of February, I believe.
I, I don't think it will invalidate it, so...
I don't think it will invalidate it, so...
Oh, excuse me. April.
Oh, if it's April, I mean, I would suggest, if we have time, to re-agendize it where it correctly states which precinct it is.
Because we want the state of Texas to be.
So the recommendation from county attorney is to be re-agendized. Okay?
Okay.
Sorry, Charles. That's what we gotta do. All right. Twenty-five. Discuss take action on county parking lots. This is a refresher on something the court approved. A little over a year ago, we asked him to go and put the fence around the parking property the county owns behind CS and CD because of a number of cars that just come in there and left, and more particularly as the municipal court opened to keep that lot from filling up. Because Allen has to use it for CS and CD, and we-- that is an obligation we have to have parking and available access from the state. We approved the money. Tim has the money to have it fenced. What we've encountered, since the city doesn't want that parking lot, we have encountered that lot fills up totally every day. And it's employees from municipal court. It's people going to municipal court. It's a whole bag of things. So the next adventure, we said, let's put a metered gate parking in there, as we've done with some other parking lots, and create revenue off of it. That was a wonderful idea till Tim got the electrical price back, and the trenching is breathtaking to get it over there. The economics of the number he's gonna throw out to you is it pays off in a little lower 22 months based on current usage. When the Medland Center comes in, it may pay off quicker, but the best we can hope to get our money back is about 22 months. Tim?
Just to fence it with a four-foot chain link fence on three sides is just under $10,000.
And that's already been approved?
And that's been approved. What-- where we got held up was trying to find the arms that would do what we wanted them to do, because we don't want to charge Allen's patrons money to park, you know, to go to the parole office. So we were trying to find a way to work it where they could get a coupon or a token or something to put in it, you know, and the logistics were just-- the prices just got mind-boggling. But we got a price on running the-- have to have electricity at two locations, one for in and one for exit, and it'll cost us $40,000 to trench across that parking lot under the alley into the building to get electricity.
So what we are asking on the court is to give us some direction and probably really end up letting Tim get this worked out to where we go to one entrance and exit instead of two. We provide tokens to Allen's folks so they can come in and out and be accommodated. Anybody else will have to have a credit card.
That-- the gate that we've-- I wish Justin was here. He's got-- he's been helping with this. We found a place that will put in a gate that reads credit cards and will take a token or a printed pass that they can get at probation office that they can insert on the way out is around $80,000 if the gate works.
Who maintains those gates?
Well, I would hope they would, but I don't know that. That's why I wish Justin was here. I don't know. I don't know that. Like I say, Justin's not...
What Justin found, Commissioner, is they'll maintain them for the first-- one of them was the first 90 days, the other was the first 180 days. Then it's on to our IT folks. Justin has indicated there's not much to maintain, but yes, it would come back to us.
The-- on the upside, if they have an event downtown and we wanted to, we could raise the price to get in the parking lot to $8 a car, $10 a car, whatever we wanted for the weekend if they were having an event, and you've got 180 cars in there, you know, you can do the math.
There are a couple of businesses down there that park back there now. They haven't been an issue, but in the scenario we're talking about, we would sell them a monthly pass so they could park. But it has become unmanageable. We had some construction materials stored there the other day and had to call the city and say, move this. We have an obligation with the state not to preclude people from doing business with Allen. That's first and foremost. We have offered it to the city about four times, and they say, no, they don't need it. And then exactly what we told them probably would happen is happening.
The-- we had previously authorized an antenna for public broadcasting. Is that...
Still there.
It's still there?
It's still in the-- it's still in-- yeah, we're just waiting for them to fence off their three. We gave them the three parking spaces on the northeast corner of that parking lot. They haven't fenced it off yet because they're still in construction on the old theater. I assume that's them.
Yeah.
And I-- and once they get done, then they'll come, fence off theirs and trench and get into the vault in the street and run their cabling around into the building.
It is...
I was just wondering if the electrical could be done in conjunction.
It's the wrong end.
The other thing is, this is not a lot because of Allen's operation and some businesses there. It's not a lot where we can do like we did another lot. Two-one business takes the whole thing. We have to be very careful that we do not interfere with Allen's business. So if you want to think about it a minute, we can talk about it later in real estate if you want.
We've got approval to put the fence up. Have you got that scheduled?
Haven't I got that scheduled yet because I was waiting to find out if we needed to tie it in with the gates and all that, but we can go ahead and put the fence up.
Sorry.
That's okay. We can go ahead and put the fence up and leave all four openings like they are now. We can fence to them because there's two on, on, is it Illinois?
Texas and Illinois.
Texas and Illinois. There's an in and out.
Yeah.
So we could just leave those open for now, and then when we decide what we want to do, fence off what we need, you know, add the fencing to...
I would prefer that right now.
Okay.
I agree. I think we need to discuss it. I've got some other questions.
Okay, we'll take some of this to executive session. That's all right, Russel?
Can I just add one thing that wasn't mentioned? Besides the-- they wash cars there. Mobile washes come and wash cars. There's a dumpster there right now for, I think, cigar frogs. I'm not sure. Y'all may have authorized that. But one of the bad things for us and for people who walk across parking lot, when municipal court closed off, forget the name of the street back there, Baird, now everybody cuts across our parking lot. People that live in those apartments there, they cut across the parking lot. Nobody wants to drive all the way around the block, and especially with construction down there with the-- I can't think.
The one center?
Yes. So they'll pop up, they'll just come, and they'll come 30 miles an hour through that parking lot. And I myself have almost been run over, not paying attention because it's a parking lot and they come through like it's a thoroughfare. So I just wanted to mention that.
By agreement, and the county attorney's noted okay, let's go to executive session with some more details.
One thing you may want to discuss, too, is adding some speed bumps in that parking lot once we get it fenced to, or, you know, slow them down, too.
Okay, so just you and your bird buffer. Hang on, we'll need you.
Judge?
Yes.
Could I say something?
Absolutely.
It's not about that parking lot?
Yeah.
But it was parking on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Since our jury system is working so well, we've had a number of complaints that we don't have enough handicap spots close to the courthouse.
Okay.
And that-- I know that we have two or three or four employees that are handicapped stickers and they park there.
Yes, sir.
But we have, on average, at least 10 other people every Monday complaining that I'm handicapped and I had to walk three blocks, two blocks, whatever. So that'd be something to put on the backyard brain about more handicapped.
I noticed that this morning. I saw a couple of them driving around, so...
Yes, sir.
We'll take your information and get with Tim and see if we can get you some remedy.
And just to update you on the jury system.
Yeah.
We are up to about 94.2% return. We had 333 jurors show up this morning.
Fantastic.
Lots of great compliments. Thank you, gentlemen, for that. They love the texting. Of course, our postal system still is the worst, but they say-- I got texted or emailed on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and they don't have a jury summons, but they still show up.
Good. Glad it's parked.
But the big deal was the handicap parking. They would like some more.
So noted. Thank you. Twenty-six. Discuss take action supporting Star Spangled Salute. This is, again, this year is not budgeted per se in a given amount. It's court's discretion. This is the Fourth of July that we join the city and the chamber in doing free to the public. We have been supporting it at $50,000 a year, and they have asked again for the 50 based on some court conversation after last year's vote and event. There were some that said, let's look at a different number. So I also have an invoice for 40,000. Those are not the strictest numbers. We can talk about anything that we care to talk about, but they're asking us to let them know what our commitment is, if any, and go forward.
They're requesting 50?
They've asked for 50 again this year. That would match what the city does. But the 40 came out of a discussion with some members of the court. He said, let's look at some other numbers. First, I think we ought to support the event. It's good for our community and it's free to the public, city and county folks. It's a family event. So I would hope y'all would agree in support. Now, what that number is.
One thing that I noticed that was discussed, I am on the chamber board, so I want to make sure I disclose that, is that in Odessa, whenever they started charging, their numbers went way down, way down. So I know last year when I attended that event, it was unbelievable. It rained, but people still stuck around till the end, and a lot of good compliments about the fact that it's something free. It's something to do, especially on Fourth of July. I think it shows how patriotic our community is, and I think it's something we need to continue to support, for sure.
To what extent?
I believe that the amount that is being requested is reasonable.
The 50,000?
Absolutely, because I think the other entities, if I'm not mistaken, are paying about the same amount.
Correct. We used to do 40-plus-10 for a race. They discontinued the race, which started at the courthouse and finished at the courthouse. So this would be 50 just for the event. We did do 50 last year, I believe.
And they have it out at Hogan again?
Yes, I believe so.
The race is iffy until that deal because it's done by a third party.
The other thing is, if I remember correctly, the fireworks show last year when we were out there took about 20 minutes. It was a very long fireworks show, and it was, again, it was amazing. Something very awesome.
As I say, it's not a budgeted dollar amount. It is a budgeted activity, so the money would have to come. It's in contingency, so...
Do you want me to make that motion and you support me?
Are you gonna make a motion, or we're going back to bird buffers?
All right. I'd make the motion that we support the Star Spangled Salute in the amount of 50,000 from contingency.
Okay.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. 50,000. Any other discussions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Twenty-seven. Discuss take action on fleet accidents. Dwayne? No report. Excellent, excellent. Twenty-eight. Take action acknowledging personnel memorandum.
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
The only thing, a little bit out of the ordinary, is on the second page, the overtime hours that you see there. There's a little bit for juvenile detention that's paid for with state funds. The overtime that you see there, some of that in the sheriff's office is not paid for with special funds. Some of it is just what we have to pay between the hours of 160 and 171s up to 11.
Okay. Okay.
That's all.
Any questions?
Motion to acknowledge?
Okay.
Second?
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Mitzi.
Mitzi. Right? I need that.
Okay. You need something ready?
Clock.
Here you go, Mitzi.
Mitzi.
Okay. Twenty-nine. Discuss take action on budget line item transfers. Veronica?
Yes, sir. I do have something to bring to your attention this morning. Page 18 of 26. It is moving money out of capital outlay in the sheriff admin department, 8,400, and moving them into the different lines: janitorial supplies, pre-employment, physicals and drugs, education and training, and equipment maintenance. So I think they've fallen short on some of those lines, and the explanation is on there. So just wanted to bring that-- make sure to bring that one to your attention because it is coming out of capital outlay. I have two additional ones to bring to your attention. Actually, on page 11 of 26, line item transfer number 3300 is from pre-trial bonding, and Ms. Monia has asked us to go ahead and remove that one. That was gonna be to cover the education and training that we discussed earlier. So you'll go ahead and remove that one because she is no longer requesting that money. I do wanted to-- I did want to bring number 17 out of 26. It's out of the tax assessor's money. It is moving money out of printing into capital outlay, less than 5,000. It has to do with a time clock plus licensing and dedicated support. Has to do with time sheet systems. Of course, Mitzi and I are all for it, but this is so that the tax office can purchase the time clock.
Karen's on the right track. She's a little ahead of us. And I would ask that if you go ahead and approve 17, subject to Ms. Hood and I visiting about the overall idea that's being put forth by Whit Smith, the people that are trying to get us in compliance. That has not been shared with any office yet, so...
Okay.
Okay. I have another question on 18. The sheriff's office janitorial supplies. Tim, you supply the maintenance. Do you buy any of the janitorial out of that line?
No. I don't purchase any janitorial supplies for them.
Okay, have we done an inventory of what's over there?
At the jail?
Yeah.
I don't-- we don't do the maintenance or the janitorial at the jail.
And it's for admin. It's not for the jail that they're requesting the money.
Oh, for admin. We-- first, the budget year allowed them to start furnishing their own janitorial supplies there because it was just much simpler for them to buy what they needed instead of us trying to second-guess what they need.
Do we use a cleaning service with them?
No, they don't. They use the inmates at LEB.
Okay.
And we were trying to, you know, keep the supplies that we thought they needed, and it was just-- it was confusion.
That's fine. Okay. No one have any other questions unless the court does?
Motion to approve a budget line item transfer?
Okay. So you have 17, subject to Karen and I's business, please.
Well, Judge, on that one, do you want us just to go ahead and pull it until we finish that other discussion, or just so that we can do everything at the same time?
I would go ahead and approve it because it's gonna be coming pretty quick, and that would be one less that we would have to address.
I know that when we had initially looked at all the timekeeping systems, we had kind of discussed the Nova Time. I know that we had an issue with that vendor, too. Nova Time has now been purchased by Tyler Technologies. I don't know if that changes anything.
Most definitely.
Time Clock Plus is a good software. Also, that was one of the ones we had previously looked at, but I know when we had initially looked at it, it was Nova Time. But I know that also that our IT department has good things to say about this Time Clock Plus. So those are...
My other question would be that if we were to hold it, that way, whenever it's time for us to purchase all this, maybe we can purchase it. That way, the individual departments don't have to come up with it, and we just go ahead and get it all done. Because if not, we're gonna have to go back to every department.
We do have some-- I know that there was some objection by some departments, but we do have departments that are willing to participate in this and make it all work with the-- our New World system.
Commissioner, if you'd rather hold it, that's fine. Just, she was doing the right thing, but she's ahead of our conversation, so... Okay.
I know it's the same time plot system that is already in use in the county. We did have them come out and do a demonstration for us and was pretty impressed with their software.
Juvenile probation department has it.
And it is compatible with New-- compatible with New World, so... And if I jumped again, I apologize. I just...
You didn't know it.
Yeah.
You didn't know anything about it.
Would it be okay if we waited, Karen, just so that way we can-- I'm just thinking it'd be better for us just to purchase everything together, and that way you guys don't even have to worry about...
And that would be wonderful. However, I've waited almost half of a fiscal year to get started on this, so it's just whatever you guys decide.
I think there may be some benefit to getting it started, right, Mike, so that we can earn out some bucks in case of the...
He wants us to visit, I guess, so...
Karen and I need to visit, and part of this is we did look at three or four vendors. The company we hired to get us in compliance is not a fan of some of these vendors. Then there are other vendors as the auditor- Then there are other vendors, as the auditor mentioned, that was bought by another company that we've had some aggravation with. So, there's about three or four pieces of the discussion that I need to share with her and a couple of other departments, so we can get on. I do appreciate you bringing up maybe we will buy it, and not the departments, but the whole thing ends up in Mitzi's lab, because it creates time.
Right.
Then let Mitzi pay for it.
Bring it on. I tell you, since he's not here, Justin came and visited with me about it, and we were just real tickled that there was an office that wanted to jump out there and try it, because the way Justin spoke with me about it is, we really need a guinea pig to work all the bugs out, make sure it integrates with New World, get it like we like it, and then we know there are other offices that are gonna want it, and some that aren't.
Here's the other thing about it, is the Whit Smith report will show us definitively who uses the machine and who doesn't. And I can tell you right now, we've got some people scheduled not to use it that are going to, and vice versa, those that aren't that will, and it deals with job description, hours worked, and their function that they direct. So, I personally am not a fan of buying anything till we get the composite report, and then start with the acquisition of the equipment to make it work. I do understand, and I'm in the same mental attitude, a little aggravated that it's taken a long time to get this moving. It started, and then we had a ruling from a federal judge that said, wait a minute, these may not be the rules, and then it went forward a little more, and now it stopped again. So, until we understand what the rules are and what the equipment has to do, it sounds like just sticking in punch time. I think we would miss a bet and probably double-spend our money, but Karen...
I wanna support Karen and Mitzi on this. We need to know whether to work with New World first, and I would prefer to go ahead and do this project, or approve the project, subject to your discussions, because I really think that the key to this is to be able to input the New World in the hours you want. Now, Karen's got, she's got basically shift workers that she's gotta track.
Correct.
And I don't think it's fair to her to withhold the situation at this point, because she can go ahead and use it while we're waiting for that report to come in. I know it's only gonna be a month or so, and we're gonna be, you know, but that's gonna cause, that's gonna cause a lot of waterfall on what we've gotta do in the county to get correct with the labor laws. So, I would think that we should go ahead and support Karen in her decision on this.
All right.
I will say, this company is in San Angelo.
Right.
They do have a seminar that they're gonna be holding next month, if anybody is, it's in Fort Worth, if anybody's interested in attending it. Also, I would like to point out that this software is very customizable, so, I mean, if it's not, doesn't have an element in it, that we're, something that we're needing to track, it's something that they can add to it, you know, I like the idea that they're pretty local, you know, just our neighbors down the road.
You got a cost on customization?
$945 is all we're talking about.
Right. And this is one of the two...
But what is the total?
No, it's, no, it's more than that. It's right at about $5,000 for everything. The other money's just coming out of another fund.
Oh, I got you.
The 900 and something is the initial piece.
Yeah.
This is...
I'll amend my motion to go ahead and include that in there. The only thing I would request is, after you and the judge speak about it, if you guys can kind of bring a report back, because it's gonna be a game changer in the county for us to kind of get an idea of how it's going, and then, of course, how it works in your office.
Well, and Karen...
I was just thinking, just we can buy the whole system altogether, but that's fine.
Yeah, Karen has chosen one of the two companies mentioned as favorable, so...
Okay, all right, well, I appreciate your consideration.
Judge, if I can just interject one thing, I just asked Veronica a question about if we decided to do this, or if the court decided to do this for the county, is how, to how much it would cost? In other words, whether we would be required to go out for bids on it? Because if we would, if a total for the county would be over 50,000?
Yeah.
And we buy this now, and then we have to go out for bids, and then you select another company, what kind of problems that causes us?
What I know right now is, Randy mentions, it's been estimated, the initial startup at each location is about $1,000, plus whatever equipment customization.
No, I think, she said 5,000?
No, I said the base. The company says, just, if you say, take it out of the box and it does nothing, that's what I'm talking about. You add the feature you want, the software, like Culver did, and you get up to about $5,000 a location. Right?
Yes, sir. If you don't actually, I mean, without getting to a whole lot of details, they have different ways that you can clock in, clock out.
Correct.
But if the actual time clock, which we're looking at a biometric...
That's the other question, you're looking at biometric.
Yes, sir, and so, that's the majority of the cost.
Yeah, and the sheriff has indicated he would like to have a biometric, and then he since came back and said, maybe something else, so I don't know.
I think when we were looking at that software, Nova Time and Time Clock Plus were kinda close, as far as, you know, what we were looking at. Cronos was much more expensive, but I remember at the time, there was a fourth item or company that we were looking at, but we really couldn't start looking, we couldn't buy it without it, because it wasn't under any kind of state contract, because I think Christie looked up all of these companies for us, and there was ways we could purchase those, piggybacking off of a state contract.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think any of them pose a problem to how we buy it.
Correct.
And if I was to recommend something today, which I can't, but I would choose the one that Karen's talking about.
Okay, Nova Time, as Mitzi's looking it up, was way over 100,000, or over $100,000.
Take the whole county there, about 130.
Yep. So, I mean, if you want to approve, that's fine.
If it's under a state contract, then, we don't have the competitive bidding issue to worry about.
Because that's why we had just gone out to get the price and everything on it.
Okay.
With that information, I think, well, let's go to it.
Before your approval, oh, go ahead.
Before, go ahead.
Oh, I just had an additional one, not anything relating to this, so what's your question about...
So, if we were to...
All right, we're out of executive session, by my watch, it is 12:48, and is there any action from executive session? Not hearing any, is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? Motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
To our adjourn.